Special meeting for June 21st, 2023 will now come to order at 3:42 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of the citizens' form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. No citizens are signed up to speak. This special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees will now adjourn to a closed and/or executive session under the Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in the closed meeting, such final action or decision shall be taken up in the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting is adjourned to closed session at?
3:43 PM.
For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the open session portion of the meeting and join closed session with the WebEx link provided for closed session.
The open portion of the special meeting of the Houston Community College Assistant Board of Trustees is reconvened at [S01]four twenty-five P. M. Items A and Item B have been pulled from the agenda. So the special meeting is now adjourned at?
Four twenty-six P. M.
Good afternoon. The regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System will now come to order on June twenty-first at?
Four twenty-six P. M.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed on the duly posted meeting notice. And before we go any further, I just want to note that we're having some difficulties with the novice portal, our voting portal. Therefore, we will be voting manually. So just wanted to inform you, and the votes will be recorded. All right? Okay. We would like to offer our condolences to Dr. Flowers and the passing of her aunt, Ms. Lorna D. Storrs. The services was held on Monday, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at Mulick Funeral Chapel in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Please keep Dr. Flowers and her family in your thoughts and in your prayers. And at this time, please join Trustee Dave Wilson for the prayer, followed by the pledge.
Could I ask you all to stand, please? Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for giving us another day. We may not show it, but we appreciate the many blessings. May your blessings be with us all this day and every day to come. We ask that you look over Houston Community College. Please bless our students and open their minds to learning. Please bless our faculty. Help them choose the right words to inspire our students. Please bless our staff to promote our students to greatness. Please bless our chancellor so he can encourage our students to excellence. In this time of transition, please bless our new interim chancellor. We ask that you give her wisdom and courage. Help her guide this institution in a direction that is pleasing, pleasing to your great honor and glory. Strengthen our spirit. Search us, oh God, and know our hearts today. Cleanse us from every sin and set us free. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We are now ready to approve. We're now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, Audit Committee, Committee of the Whole, External Relations Committee, Marketing Committee, and Special Meetings on May third, twenty-twenty-three, and regular and special meetings on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second. We are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. I'm sorry, for May twenty-twenty-three.
That's yes for me, Dr. Thomas.
Received.
Yes.
Thank you.
Received. Uh, Dr. Flowers, received. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero. No, let me correct it, seven to zero, I apologize.
Now move to our awards presentation and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards presentations and recognition.
Good afternoon. We now welcome to the podium Dr. Darren Bascom, interim DEI officer, to provide the recognitions for Juneteenth and for Pride Month. Dr. Bascom.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chancellor, Board Chair, Board Members, and everyone in the gallery. Here at HCC, we recognize and celebrate our faculty, staff, and students while acknowledging their distinctiveness and their sense of belonging. Having that sense of belonging is an individual sense that uniqueness is accepted and even treasured by our organizations and our colleagues. For the month of June, we will shine our HCC light on the celebration of both Juneteenth and Celebrate Pride Month, two of my favorite. So these are going to be detailed. So Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, and Celebration Day, is an annual holiday celebrated in the United States on June nineteenth. It marks the end of slavery in the United States and the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans. The holiday has its roots in Texas where on night, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced that all slaves in Texas were free. The origins of Juneteenth can be traced back to the end of the Civil War in eighteen sixty-five. Although President Abraham Lincoln had signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, two years previous, declaring that all slaves in the continental states were free, it took those two years for the news to reach Texas. Texas was the most remote and isolated of the Confederate states, and many slave owners had moved from other states to escape the Union policies and the Union troops. The state's isolation and vast distances between its towns and cities made it difficult for the news to travel quickly. On June nineteenth, General Granger arrived in Galveston with the force of Union soldiers. Granger read General Order Number Three, which stated, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection here therefore existing between them and that between employees and higher labor." The announcement marked the end of slavery in Texas and the emancipation of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand enslaved peoples in the state of Texas. Juneteenth is significant for many reasons, first being it marked the official end of slavery in the United States. It also played a role in the Reconstruction era through the Civil War. This is when African-Americans were being used to rebuild the South and not having their own rights. Juneteenth celebrations have been held annually since eighteen sixty-six. The first celebration was organized by freely, by newly freed African-Americans in Galveston, Texas, and it included a parade, a reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, and other festivities. A lot of communities see Freedom Day as a day of reflection and remembrance, while others see it as a day of celebration and festivities. Across the U.S., it's celebrated in so many different ways. There's parades, there's music, there's dancing, and then of course, my favorite, food. I heard it. Food. And so we all know that there are certain holidays that start and end certain food trends. This is the beginning of barbecue season. So, and we're talking real barbecue with the pit, with smoke, not drilling. So then that brings us to our next celebration, which is Celebrate Pride Month. Pride Month is celebrated every June to honor the LGBTQIA community and the struggle for equality and acceptance. It is a time to celebrate the progress that has been made in the fight for the LGBTQIA rights and to continue the work of achieving full equality for all. The origins of Pride Month can be traced back to the Stonewall riots, which took place in New York City in June of nineteen sixty-nine. At that time, homosexuality was illegal in most states, and the LGBTQIA communities and people faced discrimination, harassment, and violence. On June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine, police raided the Stonewall Inn, a popular gay bar in Greenwich, and the patrons of the bar who had been subject to frequent police raids, arrests, and resisting the police, leading to several days of protests and clashes with law enforcement. The Stonewall riots were turned, were a turning point in the LGBTQIA rights movement, sparking a new area, a new era of activism and advocacy. One year later, on June twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy, the first Pride March was held in New York City to commemorate the anniversary of the Stonewall riots. The march was, was organized by the LGBTQIA activists and allies and was a call for equal rights and an end to discriminations against the community. Pride is significant for many reasons. First, it is, it is a celebration of the community and its history, and it's also the contributions that LGBTQIA people have made to society and to honor those who fight for equality and acceptance. Pride Month is also a time to raise awareness of the continued struggle faced by LGBTQIA people. Although significant progress has been made in many years, there's still a lot of work that has to be done in the, in face of discrimination, harassment, and pride. Pride Month provides an opportunity to educate the public about the issues and advocacy for change, and pride is celebrated in many different ways, in parades, festivals, and other events. And the largest, most well-known pride parade is in New York City, New York Pride. March, which attracts millions of spectators and participants each year, is the biggest celebration of the LGBTQIA community that we have in the U.S., but Houston isn't far behind. So there is a food item that I associate with pride, and that's cupcakes. Because if you've ever been to a bakery during this month, every bakery has a cupcake that represents pride. Have y'all seen them? Yes. And if you haven't, go to any bakery in the Montrose area, in Midtown, and you will find a pride cupcake. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we now welcome to the podium Dr. Zachary Hodges, who will introduce the student success story of Kyle Aragon.
Chancellor, Board Members. Kyle Aragon, HCC alumnus of filmmaking and photography. He can't be here today, he's got a gig in Florida, so he's working. And you're gonna love his story. Kyle sums up his experience at Houston Community College by giving credit to HCC for allowing him to achieve financial success and find his rewarding career path. He said he was surprised to find out that Houston Community College could give him a university-level education but at a fraction of the cost. He explained, explained how he learned so much from his HCC instructors and from his work at HCTV. This made it possible for him to do something he loved, which was to become a travel photographer/videographer and filmmaker. He also says that by working at HCC to begin his career, it allowed him access to Hollywood stars, I'm not sure who those stars are, and others in order to, to network his way into the professional industry of filmmaking. Here is his story, so he's not only creating, but he's an entrepreneur. Thank you.
I decided to study filmmaking because it was something that since I was a kid, I love it. I wasn't sure because the market sometimes can be complicated, and a lot of people feel that it's not a stable job. So financially, it could be a risk, which is not true. But the main reason I would say is because I've been always so visual. I love to see things with my eyes, and once I go back home to watch it, that gets me so excited, like, I can't believe I was able to capture this this way. I went to the Art Institute of Houston, which was like a really good school, but it was extremely expensive. I met a student from HCC, and I told them, like, oh, I really want to learn filmmaking. They said, there's actually that HCC, they teach, they have a film program. I'm like, really? So once I heard about HCC, I went to visit, and I saw they had the soundstage, a bunch of cameras that the students could actually use it. I never thought that a community college could offer university education for a fraction of the price. One of the opportunities that I'm really thankful from HCC is that they actually have a TV channel, which is HCTV. And I had the opportunity to actually work there and see how a real production worked. So setting up the camera studios, so more hands-on, but this time was actually a job. So I feel the fact that they can have, you know, the school and also production, you know, together, that means a lot because the students can really learn hands-on. At HCTV, I had the opportunity to work with one of the biggest Hollywood stars. You know, I'm talking about Angelina Jolie. I was literally watching, like, celebrities, and I was editing the content. I was editing something that Hollywood star wasn't in. And it didn't stop there. I actually received a teleaward for an animation that I did during COVID. HCC taught me the core for filmmaking and also photography. But with that, I was able to try different things. So I've tried real estate, weddings, kins and dinners. Literally, I've worked in all types of production, including at HCTV, where I have TV experience. And after trying almost everything, I realized there was always something missing. That's when I started looking to That's when I started looking to travel photography. How does it work? What can I do? How can I make money? And once I saw this as a possibility, I started reaching out, and I got a great opportunity. I literally got to travel the world, 11 different countries in the last eight months, with everything paid. So, if it wasn't for HCC, that wouldn't have happened. HCC gave me the tools and opportunities necessary to find my path. But they also proved to me that I can achieve financial success in any field I want.
We certainly miss Kyle. At this time, we pause to recognize the outgoing United Student Council leaders for their outstanding leadership and service during the 2022-2023 academic year. We ask that the following would come forward. Recognition in the photo with the trustees and the chancellor right now in front of the dais. Sahar El-Hodiri, president. Sarah El-Hodiri, vice president. Atishi Singh, secretary. Erica Smith, treasurer. Ricardo Guzman, online student ambassador. And Shivante Moy, historian. If all of you would please join the chancellor and trustees in front of the podium for a picture, please. Congratulations in recognition, and thank you for your commitment and service to the HCC student body and HCC. Trustees and chancellor, we have one more presentation. At this time, we'd like to ask HCC Foundation Board Chair Ryan McCauley, HCC Foundation Board Members and Ambassadors, and HCC Foundation President Karen Schmidt to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for a check presentation. Today, we are honored to present this check in recognition of the HCC Foundation celebrating the achievement of its historic $20 million investment in Houston's Future Campaign fundraising goal. Indeed, a wonderful recognition and serves as an opportunity to celebrate. Congratulations to everyone who played a part in contributing to the success of the fundraising goal. Once again, congratulations to everyone who played a part in this contributing to the success of the fundraising goal. At this time, chancellor and trustees, you may return to the dais. All right, we now invite to the podium HCC Foundation President Karen Schmidt for the presentation regarding the Invest in Houston's Future Campaign celebration, which will conclude the awards, presentations, and recognitions for today.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, Chair Cynthia Linton-Gary, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Maldonado. This script is just very formal because inside of me, all I wanna do is go woo-hoo. It is a pleasure and a privilege as the president of the HCC Foundation to stand before you today and pause for this celebratory moment and acknowledge a fundraising milestone in the history of HCC and the HCC Foundation and our partnership. The achievement we celebrate today is a wonderful culmination of philanthropy and what everyone in this room makes possible. On behalf of the foundation, we are deeply grateful to all, everybody in this room's philanthropic dedication. I would now like to introduce Ryan McCauley, our board chair for the HCC Foundation, who will share more on the success of the campaign.
Thank you, Karen. I would like to officially second Karen's motion for a woo-hoo. As chair of the foundation board, I'm enormously proud to stand here today in celebration of this historic moment. Not just for the foundation, but also for everybody else in the room. We're blessed to have many of our foundation board members, both present board members and past board members here in the room with us today. In fact, do y'all mind standing up quickly so we can wave and clap? Thank you, board members. Thank you. On behalf of my fellow board of directors, we're thrilled to announce an exciting update in our HCC Invest in Houston's Future Campaign, which was actually launched in September of 2019. And when we launched this campaign in 2019, we didn't know something called COVID-19 was just around the corner. We didn't even know if we could do a campaign. We'd never done one before. We thought it was worth trying because our students deserved it, and we knew they needed our help. And they needed our help more than ever before after the pandemic started. Today, I'm honored and delighted to announce that as of April 30th, we have successfully raised a total of $20 million, $128,000 against a goal of $20 million, 16 months ahead of schedule. So, we exceeded our goal 16 months ahead of schedule, and this remarkable achievement was only possible with the exceptional dedication of everybody in this room. Every dollar counts, and we know it takes teamwork with a capital T to get something like this done. I'd really like to extend or start by extending my heartfelt appreciation for the incredible HCC Foundation staff led by our very own Karen Schmidt. Karen and her team work tirelessly every single day on behalf of our students. And as you can imagine, there's a much longer list of thank yous, and we wanna quickly acknowledge several people who are instrumental in our success. And I know it's gonna be hard, but we'd like to ask that you keep your applause till the end. Otherwise, your hands are gonna get tired because we've got a lot of clapping and thanking to do. So, I'd like to start by moving to the next slide. Thank you. And leading off the top of the list, starting with our HCC Board of Trustees. You guys are our most important partner on behalf of the foundation. We can only do what we do because of your support, and for your individual philanthropic support, we would like to say thank you. The next slide, please. Absolutely, the HCC Foundation Board has strategically built relationships with HCC leadership across many years, and our partnership with the leadership of the college has never been stronger. We're grateful to the leaders of the chancellor's Executive Council for their support and their leadership, and each and every one of you has made a personal and professional significant philanthropic contribution to the campaign. Leading this charge is Chancellor Maldonado himself. Your unwavering commitment to excellence and our student success has been an inspiration to us all. We'd also like to thank the support of Izzy Anderson, Terry Corrigan, and Ashley Smith. We appreciate each of you. Next slide, please. Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Norma Perez, has been instrumental in leading the support of our faculty and staff campaign, and even left a legacy to HCC by establishing an endowment. Thank you, Norma. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher and Dr. Remyel Young, who have consistently supported HCC student success. In fact, they were key instrumental leaders in obtaining the grant from the Lumina Foundation to support our marketing for our online college. Next slide, we've got our Faculty Senate, led by four Senate Presidents across the campaign, Dr. Desmond Lewis, Daniel Dilla, Dr. Antrice Bajet, and Professor David White, who contributed to the tradition of the Beteczek Orman Auction by raising a cumulative $110,000. That's actually over $110,000 to support our faculty and adjunct professional development. Faculty Senate President, Dr. Darren Baskin, was a member of our campaign committee in fiscal year 2019. Thank you all. Next, I wanna thank the person that I have known the longest at HCC. Dr. Shontae Graves and her team have been instrumental in creating our scholarship case for support and building partnerships with organizations like Bridge Year for student scholarship support. Next is Senior Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration and Chief Facilities Officer, oh, wait, let me skip back. Sorry about that. Southeast College President, Dr. Francis Villagrand Glover. My friend, you are a star when it comes to fundraising and supporting HCC students through the foundation, especially for the work you've done with our Material Science and Smart Manufacturing Program through the Port of Houston, Lion Del Bosel, and the Morales Foundation. Now, on to Senior Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration and Chief Facilities Officer, Marshall Heinz. At the start of the pandemic, Marshall worked with the foundation to accept a donation of important and vital PPE. And all that you have done, we are so grateful for your invaluable support in these named and donated items. All right, next is two of my favorite people who happen to be not only faculty liaisons, but HCC Foundation Board members, Dr. Antrice Bajet and Dr. Mary Lawson. They have both skillfully and successfully led our faculty and staff campaign across many years, raising almost $370,000. As Dr. Bajet and Dr. Lawson remind colleagues, every year, if you just contribute $10 a pay period, that will help pay for a class for an HCC student. And what does Dr. Bajet say that would normally cost us? One run to Starbucks. Isn't that right? Thank you, Dr. Bajet and Dr. Lawson. Next, Dr. Philip Nikotera and the Coleman College of Health Sciences. The staff over there know how to provide an excellent and realistic training environment using all the right equipment and supplies. They have built relationships with organizations like HCA, Memorial Hermann, Houston Methodist, just to name a few, and provide invaluable training and equipment and supplies to the campaign valued at over $450,000. Next, we have HCC's Black History Scholarship Committee, first led by Dr. Michael Edwards, who passed the torch on to Donnell Cooper and Farrell Prestige, and in total, raised over $460,000 in support of HCC student success. An incredible accomplishment. Next, we have Dr. Zach Hodges, a strong leader in raising philanthropic support for HCC endowments, for KED students and the agricultural program, sponsorships for the HCC Foundation Gala, engineering scholarships, innovation grants, emergency assistance, and funds for the food pantries. Wherever Dr. Hodges sees an unmet need to support HCC students, he's leading the charge with the foundation to make it happen. He helped us raise over $790,000 in philanthropic support during the campaign. It's hard, it's hard to hold the applause, right trustee Laredo?
That's why I have to hold my arm.
I get it, I get it. And we're still not done, we've got more. Dr. Michael Edwards stepped up as president of the Northeast College, and the philanthropic support has really taken off. During the campaign, nearly $1 million was raised in support of programs for students at the Northeast College. That includes the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, the support of the Public Safety Program, the philanthropic support for the Criminal Justice and Law Enforcement Program, which has now been renamed the Allen Helfman Criminal Justice and Law Enforcement Program, and the Transportation Program continues to receive donations of engines and vehicles. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Next, we have Dr. Siddiqui and his team of leaders at the Central College, who might know a little thing or two about raising funds. Dr. Siddiqui has stewarded the relationship with the Finger Family Foundation, which provides over $250,000 in scholarships per year. In addition, HCC's own alumni Hugo Ortega is honored in the lobby of the Culinary Arts Building in return for an endowment for culinary students. In addition, Siemens donated critical design software for the interior design program, and the fashion design program has created an award-winning, beautiful archive. In total, that's over $1.5 million of philanthropic support. Thank you. Dr. Barilo Hopkins, truly a visionary, and she engages industry partners to invest in Houston's future and HCC students through academic programs as the president of the Southwest College and vice chancellor for workforce programs. She stewards the relationships with our existing partners like PVF Roundtable and ECMA, and under her leadership, the doors of new partnerships have been opened with technology giants like Apple, Intel, and Nvidia. Consumer product giants such as PepsiCo are investing in supply chain jobs through innovative scholarships programs, and she has gotten apprenticeships off the ground, meeting the critical need for our students to work and to go to school at the same time and getting much-needed skills into the workforce. Dr. Barilo Hopkins personally contributes each year to the faculty and staff campaign with her lead gifts, and her philanthropic support and leadership during our campaign topped over $4 million. We have a special acknowledgement for her from the HCC Foundation Board in appreciation for her work. Thank you. Next slide, Dr. Kurt Ewen, along with Dr. Maya De novo, Chief Entrepreneurial Officer, led an award-winning entrepreneurial program. The Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Businesses Program is in its 11th year at HCC and has trained over 1,000 entrepreneurs here at our school alone and funded by a $1 million annual grant. Over and above the Goldman Sachs $4 million, the Entrepreneur Program received $900,000 in grants from Wells Fargo for the Women of Color Success Series, Mattress Mac School of Selling, Business Plan Competition, and contributions from our own entrepreneur-in-residence and HCC Foundation Board Member, Dr. David Regenbaum, with naming recognition for he and his wife at the Glinda and David Regenbaum Entrepreneurial Center at the Northwest College. Dr. Ewen has also established the Ewen Family Endowed Chair Program to support innovation and teaching and learning, and grants received innovation for WHI. The private funding that he helped us, along with Dr. De novo, find supports over $6.2 million. We also have a special acknowledgement for Dr. Ewen and Dr. De novo. We also have a special acknowledgement for Dr. Ewen and Dr. DeNovo from the HCC Foundation Board in appreciation for their philanthropic leadership and support. Okay. Truly, it is fundraising really as a team sport, and we're grateful for everyone who made this dream team possible and brought us together to raise over $20 million in support for our students. I'd like to invite everybody to a little party outside. Please join Karen, myself, and the Foundation Board next door in the foyer for a brief reception to pop some non-alcoholic bubbly and continue the celebration and a nice photo up. Please, join us.
At this time, the meeting will recess for the HCC Foundation Reception in celebration of the investment in Houston's future campaign achievement. The meeting is recessed at 5:03 PM. The regular meeting of the Houston Community College Board of Trustees is reconvened at On behalf of the Board of Trustees, it is my pleasure to announce that a special meeting held on Tuesday, June 20, 2023. The Board announced the selection of Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher, currently President of HCC Online, as the sole finalist for Interim Chancellor, following an expeditious and thorough process outlined in the interim search timeline. The Board will vote to approve the contract at a special board meeting scheduled for July 11, 2023. Dr. Ford Fisher will begin to provide executive leadership for HCC on September 1, as we move forward with a comprehensive permanent chancellor search. We look forward to Dr. Ford Fisher bringing her extensive expertise and professionalism to HCC during the transition period. She is a highly respected educator and leader with phenomenal higher education experience, including 38 years at Houston Community College. The Board's announcement and interim chancellor search information can be found on the HCC website at hccs.edu. We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts and overview from conferences or workshops attended and or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their respective comments to no more than four minutes. There are no regular scheduled board meetings for July 2023. The regular scheduled meeting for August are as follows. Committees and committee of the whole meetings will be on August 2. Special meeting, a board workshop, will be August 16, and regular meeting will also take place on August 16. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administration Building, 3100 Main Street, Second Floor Auditorium, and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirement. We will now take this moment to express a happy birthday wish to Dr. Reagan Flowers, who will celebrate her birthday on July 8. We hope that you have a marvelous birthday celebration and wish you many more. This concludes the chair's report. We will now hear from Dr. Maldonado and the chancellor's report.
I thought we were doing district reports.
Oh, baby, come on, I could talk so much, I tried to skip through it.
Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to the Northeast Campus and Dr. Edwards for a successful open house on June 10, and then the following weekend, the Northeast Campus participated in the Mayor's Juneteenth Parade. That was a very well-attended event. And also, I was looking at the news this morning, no, yesterday morning on Fox 26, and I saw Dean Vogel on Fox 26 News talking about the ACCT, there's a shortage of mechanics, but he was giving us some really good information about ACC's program and the auto program, so I wanted to give a shout out for that. Thank you.
This Juneteenth was especially, was a very special Juneteenth because Al Edwards established the statewide Juneteenth, District 146, which is in my district. At the Ashton Villa in Galveston, there is a statue of Al Edwards that stands as a testament of his efforts to establish Juneteenth as a state holiday, and now it is a national holiday. And I want to take a moment, this is a very personal And I want to take a moment, this is a very personal thing, to congratulate my stepson, who is now Operations Command for the United States Air Force Academy. Congratulations to Colonel Chio Starworth and his wife, transplant nurse, Shanae Starworth. I am very, very proud of my stepson for making this milestone in his life long before he turns 45. So, this is special for my family, and I'm just very thankful for him as a stepson. And I want to thank my community. My seniors have been doing amazing things, and they are ready to come back to the college in the fall for their classes. So, I'm looking forward to my seniors coming. And on my campus currently, there is a robotics and robotics training program for middle schoolers. Twenty-five middle schoolers every week learn a different coding and programming regimen under urban STEM, and this is week three of eight weeks. And so, we hope that we can double the size of that class next year, but these are 11 to 13-year-olds. And so, I'm very, very thankful to Dr. Monique Michaud and her efforts to have the coding and robotics program at South Campus. Thank you.
The trustees? Trustee Laredo?
Hello. Yes, in my community in the East End, I participated on Memorial Day, several celebrations. They were not really big celebrations. They told us, "Don't, it's not a party. It's just a memorial," so we had to tone it down. But we were very proud of our veterans and those that are no longer with us. But I had the honor to speak at the American Legion Post 472, and I also want to say a happy birthday to one of our WWII veterans, Mr. David Dela Cruz, is celebrating 95 years tomorrow. And he's really active. He still drives. And so, when he sees me, he goes, "Ms. Laredo from HCC." So, he always gives a big shout out wherever I'm at. So, I tell him, "Thank you." And also, I want to congratulate all our graduates. We had lots of graduates from our high schools, and they've participated in our dual credit at HCC also. And also, our robotics program at the Southeast is going on as well. And so, we just have lots of programs out in the East End and in the Southeast. So, thank you to all of you. Thank you to all our presidents. Thank you to our students, our faculty and staff for a great job this past year. So, thank you. Oh, one more thing. Well, you know that I support the Astros, win or lose, so they won today. And I have to say, Sharon called me, I was at the game, and said, "Trustee Laredo, are you gonna be there? Because we need a quorum." What? So, thank goodness, they won.
Okay, now we can move forward with the Chancellor's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, today, we're gonna look at some data from our Eagle Promise Program. As you know, I try to share some of, a little bit of the great volume of data that we look at in administration on a daily basis. The focus on the Eagle Promise Program is one that connects us to our students and those that have financial barriers. The mission of the Eagle Promise Scholarship is to remove those barriers for students entering HCC directly from high school. The program aims to assist students in assessing a quality education immediately after completing high school to keep them on track to obtain a two-year degree within three years or less. Eagle scholars have their tuition fees and up to $500 in books covered. We strive to eliminate student loan debt for our Eagle scholars and counsel them to avoid becoming burdened by such debt as it can be a barrier for them later in life. Students interested in being Eagle Scholars begin applying in April. To be eligible, students must graduate from high school the spring before enrolling for fall at HCC and must reside within the HCC taxing district. They must complete the FAFSA or the TASFA applications. Students need a calculated expected family contribution of less than $10,000. We don't have any problems finding takers for that. To date, the Eagle Promise Program has served 4,566 students, and the outcomes look promising. A pictured here are the fall-to-fall persistence rate of the Eagle Scholars compared to students who are not part of the Eagle Promise Program. Almost a 20-point difference, if you look at that. This underscores the importance of our financial aid and scholarship programs to student success. So, this is one area in working with the foundation and working with our financial advisors, working with staff and administration, we're helping these students succeed, stay in school, and exit as quickly as possible. Here you see the comments from two students who received the Eagle Promise Scholarship. "This program is important to me and my family due to it enabling me to have the opportunity to further improve my educational studies. This is an opportunity that I have to take advantage of since it would enable me to be the first person in my family to have graduated from high school and have the ambition to further my studies in college." The other quote is, "The opportunity that the Eagle Promise Program presents is an ease of mind while going to college knowing that the money from this program will help me with the money for college." We've been reporting to the Board on enrollment, so I wanted to show you a snapshot of where we are today with enrollment. This slide represents the unduplicated enrollment for the academic year 2223 by semester. The fall semester, spring semester, and the summer. The gold line represents academic year 23. The blue line is 22. The fall increase for, excuse me, the enrollment for the fall increased from 52,797 to 54,767, representing a 4% increase. The spring enrollment increased from 5,596 to 53,049, representing a 5% increase. And the summer 23 enrollment is currently in progress. To date, we show a slight decrease from 30,377 to 29,252, but we're still registering students for the summer session. So, we'll be able to report on the summer later on, the next time the Board meets, so you can see how we ended up for the year. So, this supports what we've been telling the Board is that we're seeing a pattern of continued increase in enrollment semester to semester. Trustees, over the past two decades, the Texas Black Expo have recognized leaders who have demonstrated exemplary commitment to investing in and supporting businesses that positively impact urban communities. On May 19th, Dr. Shante Graves, Vice Chancellor of Student Services, was honored by the Texas Black Expo as a 2023 Black Expo Corporate Titan Award Honoree. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Graves. On the subject of Dr. Graves, and it's always difficult to lose a team member, particularly a high-performing one, but we remain excited when our colleagues are progressing in their professional growth. And we see that at our meetings. We see us, all of our team getting better at what we do, becoming more proficient, being better at analyzing and building team support. It's with this in mind that I am proud to announce that Dr. Shante Graves has been selected and has accepted the position of Provost at Howard Community College in Maryland. While it is disappointing to announce her departure, we are happy for the students at Howard Community College. Dr. Graves' accomplishments, qualifications, and willingness to serve will be missed at HCC, but we wish her continued success. I've appointed Dr. Francis Villarreal Glover to serve in a dual role as Southeast College President and Interim Vice Chancellor for Student Services. This appointment enables HCC to retain the progress that we've made in student services. And Dr. Villarreal Glover is a former AVE Associate Vice Chancellor at Houston. She's here a couple of years, and she held the equivalent position as Vice President of Student Services at Northern Virginia Community College. So, she comes to the position with some strong credentials and experience, and I want to wish her the best in that interim role, because she was also, was assistant on keeping her role as President of Southwest College. So, I see an interesting pattern here that our vice chancellors want to stay connected to the students at the colleges. So, congratulations to Dr. Villarreal Glover. Trustees, under Special Reports, the United Student Council President will resume the report in the fall, in the beginning of the fall semester. And today's Faculty Senate report is being postponed. As Professor White could not be here, I do want to recognize Dr. Dejan Grigsby, who's sitting in for him, and see if she has any words she'd like to add.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Dejan Grigsby, and I'm the Faculty Senate President-elect for the ensuing year, and I look forward to working with and speaking with all of you as time allows it. Dr. Professor White is not here this evening, and he did ask me to come and read his prepared remarks. So, if you please close your eyes, you'll be able to hear his voice and channel him in the ensuing prepared remarks. Professor White deeply regrets not being able to come this evening in person, but wants you to know that he is watching the live stream. The Senate is pleased to report a fairly robust turnout for its annual faculty retreat held in Galveston last month. This event highlights the importance of training by faculty for faculty, giving our most talented individuals a platform to share their knowledge and expertise and to further build community within faculty ranks. Keep those eyes closed. Keep your channeling. As well, the Senate held a workshop in May to begin the process of formulating a position paper regarding the many changes that have come upon this institution in the last several years. We talked about transformation and feedback from faculty across the institution to that end. The senators feel quite strongly that many things are going in the right direction, yet they did identify adjustments and revisions that they felt were important to discuss. We hope to have this document available for the Board's review by August. The Senate thanks Dr. Perez for her support of the event. Thank you so much, Dr. Perez. And the Senate also thanks the West Houston Institute, where it was held, for hosting the workshop and for use of the Maker Space. Just ask David, because he created or led us to create our own custom T-shirts for Faculty Senate, and we also did create one for the Chancellor upon his visit to our June meeting. So, I hope that you're enjoying that every moment that you can. And we do have Dr. Nathan Smith in the audience, and he is actually wearing one, so that everyone can see and realize what Dr. Maldonado is wearing in his off time. Okay, so the Senate is also engaged in two important review projects with the administration and specifically with talent engagement. The first is a review of the hiring process for full-time faculty, which is timely and pertinent given our most recent round of interviews for new hires. The second is a review of faculty job descriptions, starting with the adjunct job descriptions. For a long time, there has been a certain amount of ambiguity there, and the Senate feels that could be a drag and perhaps a hinder on hiring the best talents, who are pleased to work with talent engagement on creating any necessary improvements. Finally, Professor White again regrets his absence at this critical time, but we yet remind the members of the Board of the Senate's support for the administration's budget proposals, including the pay adjustment for full and part-time faculty. We understand that people of good conscience may disagree, but we firmly believe that this budget deserves to be passed. Thank you very much, and thank you for listening to the Faculty Senate.
Trustees, finally, I want to thank the United Student Council President. That's outgoing. She was up here earlier to get an award, Sahara Hodary, for her service on the United Student Council, and her frequent meetings with me on keeping me updated on the projects and the activities that that fine group of leaders was working on. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with Board Service Office. Time allotted to each citizen or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The Board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee or comments about the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee, and may require the speaker to resume his or her comments in closed session as permitted under the personnel exception to the Open Meetings Act. We have individuals who have signed up to appear before the Board in both open and closed session. We will hear from those individuals who signed up to speak in the open session of the meeting first, and then adjourn to closed session for those who signed up to speak in closed session. The following has signed up to appear before the Board in open session. Mark Hartray, you can come forward, come to the podium, please.
Should I begin?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I was full-time faculty for many, many years. I retired last year, and there's one area of concern I think that the new full-time chancellor could look at, and that would be the centralization of academics with one department chair. I think this could be problematic for a few reasons. I'm not sure the chair is gonna have the time to adequately supervise and evaluate all the faculty, given how spread out Houston is. Also, there's a temptation when you're chair to advocate your teaching methods to others. I would probably do it too. I think a better method might be that you teach to the needs of the community, along with where you're strong at. That seems to me a better way to do that. A second area, I think, is with students. Right now, if a student has a complaint, where are they gonna go? They could call the chair at the phone number. In the old system, you'd go to a dean of instruction or to a local chair. I think that would be a much better way to resolve problems. Also, as far as scheduling goes, I think each campus should kind of have its own schedule. You know, at the Katie campus, where you have so much traffic, maybe begin the evening classes at 6:30. Central campus, maybe at 5:30. Local control would more likely support that. Third, facilities, classroom facilities. You know, often, we would get classes, lecture classes would be assigned in labs, and lab classes would be assigned in lecture rooms. And it would eventually get squared away, but it seemed to me that that's not a way to start a semester. Also, if you have to move a class, you have to email someone, I assume at 3100, and, you know, wait for a response. I had a situation where my computer wasn't working, and I got an email saying, "Well, don't move, because that would cause disruption." Well, isn't it a greater disruption not to be able to teach? I think local control would be better there. Also, campus spirit. You know, at the Katie campus, we had such a great spirit there. We had speakers coming in, you know, Bob Stein from Rice, Dick Murray from U of H. We had a film series called Pandora's Box. Great. You know, after the centralization, all that went away. The campus spirit was limited. And then finally, I don't know if any other college does this, any other large college in the United States or in this area, centralizes academics. San Jac doesn't do it. Lone Star doesn't do it. So, we have to ask ourselves, is this the best method? Are we ahead of the curve? Or possibly... Or possibly, you know, a little bit behind the curve? And again, SandJack and Lone Star would have a much better motivation to centralize because they have fewer campuses. Lone Star has, what, eight or nine campuses? SandJack has four or five, and yet they don't do it. So centralizing 20 campuses seems really challenging to me. So those are some of the arguments. I'm not saying I'm right, but I think that's something the next Chancellor should maybe look at. I know that the arguments on the other side, you could save money, that type of thing, but I certainly think that's an issue that the next full-time Chancellor should look at. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We will now adjourn to closed session to hear the comments of those who have requested to speak in closed session.
Is there one more?
He left. He will be back in August. Okay. As I stated, we will adjourn to closed session to hear comments of those who request to speak in closed session. So this portion, the Board will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act, as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in closed session, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up in the open meeting of a subsequent public meeting of the Board upon notice thereof. The meeting is hereby adjourned to executive session at 5:44 PM. The Vals Trustees.
The open portion of this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System is now reconvened at...
7:01 PM.
We appreciate concerns raised during the hearing of the citizens' portion of the meeting. If the matters you raised are not included on the board agenda, state law specifically, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on these issues at this board meeting. The comments provided will be taken into consideration and we want to say thank you for speaking with us this evening. We will now move to the consent agenda. Please note that Agenda Item Number Six, Acceptance of Donated Item by Wolfram Technologies, has been pulled from the consent agenda by administration and will be presented for consideration at a later date. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda and set aside for discussion?
Number eight?
Number eight?
Number eight? Okay. Okay, we will also move, remove number, I mean, Item Number Eight from the consent agenda as well and vote on remaining items. I'm sorry, pull.
To be clear, if I have to adjourn, hold for discussion and a separate vote. Item Six was pulled from the agenda entirely.
Highly. And Item Eight will be pulled for discussion, will set aside, be set aside for discussion. Okay? So.
Here. Yes. I don't know if I know how to ask this question about the combined. What is it, eight is being pulled, but nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how to ask the question if, if it's a yea or nay. It's not the consent agenda, we can't ask questions?
If, if there are questions on any item on the consent agenda, it needs to be pulled from the consent agenda and then we'll discuss and have a separate vote after we've voted on whatever remains of the consent agenda. So.
Okay, so nine, ten, and eleven, because the question covers eight through eleven. The one question covers eight through eleven, so.
And so we'll.
Four, nine, ten, and eleven. And then I can just ask the one question.
Okay. So.
Eight, nine, ten, and eleven to be set aside for discussion.
Yes.
O two, accept, to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Sharon, do, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, we need a motion.
Okay. So, since we've pulled those items, we need a motion and a second first.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in second. Okay.
Who?
Eva.
And so trustee Temes, if, if you're going to vote on the consent agenda, we need to be able to see, see you on camera.
We're now ready to vote.
Here, number of vote.
Is that affirmative?
Oh, I, I, yes, that's a yes for me, Sharon, sorry. I didn't know it was open for the vote. Thank you.
And Dr. Flowers?
It's a yes.
Received.
Okay.
Now, if you have, if you have a discussion of, if you have a discussion of, I, hey? The motion passed unanimously, nine to zero.
Right.
They do unless you want to combine them by any of them. But I'll leave, I think, because of.
Definitely. Okay, we'll, okay, discussion on Item Eight first, we'll do it separately. Okay, Dave?
The, the budget in twenty-one and twenty-two was three hundred and seventy-one million and we had a forty-nine million dollar surplus. And the budget in twenty-two, twenty-three was three hundred and seventy-eight million and we have a projected twenty-three million dollar surplus. And the twenty-three, twenty-four budget is three hundred and ninety-eight million. It's even increased more. And I don't think we're being fair to the taxpayers and there's irresponsible spending dominates the HCC unrestricted budget. It's riddled with waste, duplication, and pork with no attention to value.
And the comments on Item Eight? item Eight was something you want to?
Well, I, I have to, I want to ask the question. So the Item Eight does not include Item Nine, that's a separate item. It does not include Item Ten, that's a separate item. It does not include Item Eleven, that's a separate item. What is the total cost or the total budget with the operating budget? And, and confirm that the, the pay raise for our, the salary raise for our?
About five hundred and fifty-one million for all.
Okay, so the, the pay raise is included in the unrestricted operating budget, correct? The pay, okay, that's, okay, that's good. But when, and when we add nine, ten, eleven, to eight, what is the total dollar value for the budget? Because this, the, the operating is three ninety-eight by itself. So when we add the others, what, what are we looking at?
There's some offsetting amounts of some of the, the restricted budget has some money if it's coming in to revenue streams under the operating budget because the restricted budget is grants and financial aid. So it's not as straightforward as just adding the numbers together. There would be some offset eliminations in a consolidated statement if you want to know the total dollars.
Well, I can, I can understand that statement, but the, the recommended budget is the recommended budget. So if it is a recommended budget, we have to assume, worst-case scenario, that everything will be spent. So what is the total, when you add these together, offset or not?
The financial aid.
What is that dollar value? And financial aid does depend on the students, the number of students that we get, correct?
The tuition on the unrestricted budget is, receives money from the restricted budget, the financial aid portion, that does depend on students. So they're, they're interrelated. So those numbers are, are duplicated and in order to get the, the, the real total number, you'd have to eliminate those duplicated numbers.
So we don't do that? We, we didn't, we didn't consider that, correct?
It wasn't an issue of not considering, as we, that's not how the budgets are prepared to present it.
So the salaries for the recommended auxiliary budget and the salaries for the operating budget are not duplications?
The preponderance of the salaries on the operating budget. I don't, there's a few salaries that are paid from the auxiliary budget that deal with some of the facilities, the rental income, that are, that are tied to the revenue generation of the auxiliary budget.
I'm.
But the, the, the faculties all paid under, the preponderance of the faculties paid under the operating budget.
Okay, that, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I understood that that's where the faculty, is that the four percent? That, that that's in the operating budget?
Yeah. Some of the, what we refer to as soft money, some of that is in some of the other budgets, but the full-time faculty are paid from the operating budget.
Okay. So, I, I, I guess I have to, I agree with my colleague that it's, that it's, it's, it's a little overwhelming to see three hundred and ninety-eight million, but our faculty and only faculty, or faculty and staff, or faculty and support staff, always it's just faculty that, that has this four percent increase?
There's a four percent across the board and then faculty is receiving an additional amount, is he said three and a half percent? So there's an additional three and a half percent for faculty that goes on top of that four percent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood where faculty is in terms of how we're supporting faculty. I wanted to make sure that I understood the across-the-board plus anything else that faculty in this budget. So I'm, I'm good with that. And then that, even that depends on the number, I mean, we've got to have the students. So the plan is to increase enrollment and that, that's part of the plan, that the enrollment will increase so that we are not losing any more faculty. That, that's what I want. So I'm good for the operating.
Is that the same?
Yeah, because.
Sorry, you had with nine, ten, and eleven, you had the same.
Yeah, because if you add all of these together, and, and, and budgets are budgets. So when you add them together, if it's, if it's overage, if it's duplication, whatever it is, if it's written as a budget, you add these together, that was what I was asking about, the total cost. We, we look good in Harris County because we have a large tax base and trustee Glazier would always remind us that the, the commercial and residential tax base here is extraordinary, which is why we, we have done very well. And that's good for us, but with the new funding formula, it's going to be tough because they're expecting outcomes and, and to be paid based upon outcomes and based on what we looked like last year, the outcomes that they're expecting, I'm concerned that it's going to be tough for us to, to meet that demand so that the state pays us. But I, I, I'm going to, because the faculty and because the raise is in the operating budget for faculty and staff, I am, I am supporting this, understanding that perhaps if we do not engage and increase, engage communities and increase enrollment, some faculty simply won't be here. So I'm, I'm just going to support eight. I, I have had some concerns about the others, but I'll, I'll support eight. Thank you.
Okay. We're now ready to consider.
Are we able to combine eight, nine, ten, eleven?
Can we now? No, I'd like to, I'd like to vote on those other separate problems.
Oh, you have questions on it? Okay.
You have questions? Okay, well, let me move, like, let me move forward, as I was going to do then. We will now consider Item Number Eight. Is there a motion? Right? We got a motion on eight. Ready to vote for Item Eight.
A yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
And it's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to one.
We're now ready to consider Item Nine.
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Can I hear?
My apologies, I was asking that he can, they can combine nine and ten, but eleven is separate.
Already. It's already a motion for number nine and a second, so we can now vote on number nine.
That's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
And that's a yes for me, Sharon, I'm S.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Now consider Item Number Ten. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We're now ready to vote on Item Ten.
A yes for me, Sharon.
Received. Thank you. And Dr. Temes?
That's a yes for me, but my video, hold on a sec. That's a yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
Yeah.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We'll now consider Item Number Eleven. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
We're now ready to vote on Item Eleven.
A yes for me, Sharon.
Received.
And that's a yes for me, Sharon, I'm S.
Okay, received. The motion passed with a vote of seven to two.
Is there a motion to approve Item A, Commercial Truck Tractor Trailers Parts Maintenance and Repair, Project?
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
No, you're, I was going to move it. Sorry.
Project number RFP dash C twenty-two thirty-eight.
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Chancellor Malgernado will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Trustees. This is a recommendation for you to authorize me to execute contracts with a pool of vendors, namely Wayside Auto and Truck Parts, Heavy Duty Headquarters, Houston Freightliner, Northwest Drive Train Services, Amigo Truck LLC, Great Western Trailer, and Utility Trailer of Texas to provide commercial truck, tractor, trailer, parts, maintenance, and repair for HCC's Continue and Education Commercial Transportation Program in accordance with RFP C twenty-three dash thirty-eight. The cost for all the goods and services under the resulting PO contracts shall not exceed a collective amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the selected pool of all awarded vendors and shall be governed by the approved HCC purchase order terms and conditions. The project is funded through the fiscal year twenty-three Center of Excellence's Continue Education Commercial Transportation Operating Budget.
Is there any discussion?
One question, Madam Chair.
Quickly.
It's per year, how many years? Is it per year or it's one year?
The, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year.
Per year. And how many, how many years?
It's a one year.
Open-ended.
There's an option, but there's an option to renew, but it's not, that's not why we're bringing it forward today.
So you're only bringing forward one year? One year. That's not stated clearly?
Let me, let's let Marshall answer the question.
It's a two-year contract with three one-year renewals.
So it's a two-year contract and it's three one-year renewals?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of just a two-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We will now vote on Item Eight. Commercial Truck Tractor Trailer Parts Maintenance and Repair, Project Number RFP C twenty-three thirty-eight.
That's a no for me, Sharon.
Received.
Sharon, it's a yes for me, I'm S.
Received. The motion passed with a vote of seven to two.
There are motion to approve Item B, Full-Time Faculty Academic Year Contract Renewals.
So moved.
All moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Chancellor Malgernado?
Madam Chair and Trustees, this is the recommendation for approval of the renewal of full-time faculty contracts for academic year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. Their total renewals for the coming year are eight hundred and ten. This includes one hundred and ninety-six twelve-month faculty, five hundred and thirteen ten-and-a-half-month faculty, and one hundred and one nine-month faculty. And as the board knows, these numbers will change throughout the year as faculty come and go to meet our, our needs.
Question?
One question. How many faculty did we have twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three?
Turn it forward to Izzy Anderson.
Thank you. We had about eight hundred and eighty, but we've had some retirements as well and some, and that number also includes full-time interims, which don't come to you because they're not on contracts.
Well, eight eighty to eight-ten. And you have twenty-one, twenty-two? You don't have twenty-one.
I have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so eight eighty to eight-ten. Thank you.
There are no additional questions. We will now move to vote.
Sharon, that's a yes for me.
Received. Received.
Yes for Thomas, Sharon.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
There are motion to approve item C, Approval of Resolution for Office of the Governor Grant Funds for Ballistic Shields.
So moved.
There's second?
Second. Second.
It has been moved in second. Chancellor Malgernado will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Trustees. This is a recommendation authorizing me to, I'm sorry, approving a resolution authorizing me or my designated to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate a grant on behalf of HCC that is offered by the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the funding of Level III Hand-Held Ballistic Shields for the HCC Police Department. There's no fiscal impact on the college as the portable ballistic shields will be purchased with the grant funds, and there is no matching requirement.
Are there any questions? Okay, no questions. We will now vote on item C.
Sharon, that's a yes for me.
Received for both.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We'll now move to item D, Report on Capital Improvement Program. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Malgernado will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Trustees. The monthly capital improvement program report is in your packet. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to that report.
Are there any questions? There are no questions? Okay. The meeting is now- Oh, God, Jesus, I'm really in a hurry. Okay, who's going to make the motion?
So, do I make the motion? Oh. I have it written down. Madam Chair, I move that we affirm the Level III decision in the Level IV complaint that's in front of us.
It has been moved in second. We will now have a vote.
Sharon, that's a yes for me. This is Thomas.
Okay, let me enter the motion.
Sharon, that's a no for me.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of six to two.
Okay. The regular meeting of HCC Board of Trustees is adjourned at-
Seven twenty-five PM.